Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council, February 3rd, 2014. Deputy Mayor, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisal, liberty, and justice for all.
Dolores.
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Cockton.
Here.
Counselor Manassas is not here yet. Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Rell.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peter Barry.
Here.
Mayor Montanelli.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll move right into public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak for the public.
Good evening. Gascoll Antonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Here we go again. What is wrong with this picture? When I'm headed north on Orchard, I come to the intersection of Orchard and Hillcrest Avenue. As I look east toward Silas Dean, I can see for a distance of 344 feet. 344 feet. Traffic headed west on Hillcrest Avenue has a stop sign at this intersection. As I look toward Walker Hill Road, I can see for a distance of 970 feet. Traffic headed east on Hillcrest Avenue has a stop sign at this intersection. Now, these measurements were taken by the town. I did not take these measurements. As I approach Morrison Avenue from Tifton Road, I stopped at the intersection. Looking west toward Walker Hill Road, I can see for a distance of 232 feet. 232. Traffic headed east on Morrison Avenue does not have to stop at this intersection because there is an old stop sign. 280 feet is required for the 25 miles per hour zone. What we can see, 232, the required by the DOT, 280 feet. I would like to ask the Town Manager, what does Hillcrest Avenue as or deserve to have two stop signs and Morrison Avenue not even one at their intersection? Is it because the intersection side distance on Hillcrest Avenue is 344 feet and Morrison Avenue is 232 feet? Or is it because the daily traffic on Hillcrest Avenue is 450 cars per day and Morrison Avenue is 750? No, maybe because the reason could be that Hillcrest Avenue is 20 feet wide and Morrison Avenue is less than 24 feet wide. Or is it because Hillcrest Avenue has a snow shelf of 15 feet wide, that is, the distance between the curb and sidewalk, and Morrison Avenue in the vicinity of this intersection has a varying width of three feet to zero feet? Or is it possible that Morrison Avenue was never intended to be connected to Silas Dean Highway? That's why we never had the stop sign? Again, I must ask, how can a stop sign be against the law on one street that does not meet many of the roadway standards and therefore less safe and not against the law on another street, parallel and adjacent to Morrison Avenue, where all the roadway standards are met and therefore much safer? A reminder, I was told by the Town Manager months ago that the stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue were not needed. I'm going to ask again, how long is it going to take to address this problem of inequality and fairness that exist for many years? Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. What happened to our full house? Board of Education meeting last time was about this too. Shows like, where are people? Don't they care what goes on in their town? I attended your, the, Infrastructure Committee meeting a couple of Wednesday or so ago and I sort of thought the public was going to be able to talk during that Infrastructure Building Committee meeting, so I heard, or I thought I heard in the past. But I didn't hear anybody speak out for the public, and I know there was only a few of us that wanted to talk. But anyway, I'll talk to you. It appears that the town is short that night, $11.9 million, and of course, they went back and looked at some other cuts to where you're down to somewhere around 10 point something, 10.9, 10.6, some kind of a number like that. They're complaining, the Building Committee is complaining that they're short of money due to numerous issues that came along before the referendum. And what do they mention? The economy. Well, we all want the economy to get better. But anybody that's planning anything has to have enough what-ifs ahead and have everybody up, in a case like this, everybody's upfront on the issues that this could happen, that could happen. Obviously, that discussion didn't take place. And because contractors are now bidding, bidding higher on certain work, we're over budget. Another complaint was the PCBs in the building, they're too costly to remove. But then, we hear that the state has raised the bar on PCB removal. Well, for the state to raise the bar on PCB removals, there's a process that happens before it actually happens. And our experts, whether they're the paid people that we have working for us, whether they're volunteers that we have working for us, they should have all been hearing, had their ear to the ground, listening what's happening up in Hartford with projects like this. And you would have known whether this was in the works, not after we kissed off on the referendum. Now, we're told, oh, they raised the bar, which means we have to do more work. And then, of course, there's a problem where it mentions that they were delayed by six months getting contractor bids out for PCB removal. Not our fault. Not our fault. The citizens should not be held for that. Somebody else should be held for that. And then, of course, the project is too big for what the state of Connecticut will give us on reimbursements. Every one of you people that were sitting here back then knew it was too big. You heard from many citizens like myself that it was too big, not because of the reimbursement, because I didn't understand that. It was just too big to begin with. You have a population of students that's on the decrease, and here you're making this building so much, much, much bigger. And now, you're finding yourself in a hole that you can't afford it. You can't, you cannot learn to live within your means. The rest of us do, and we rely on you people. When I say we rely on you, that's something that, in the legal area, that means a lot. I think Jerry would go along with that. I relied on you, Jerry, and I relied on everybody else here to tell us the good, the bad, the whatever. And we didn't hear about these things earlier. Now, it's, you got us by the throat. You're jamming it down our throat. You jammed the referendum down our throat. Obviously, you folks didn't know the economy was getting better. Obviously, you didn't know that the state of Connecticut had raised the bar. Obviously, there's a lot of things you folks didn't know when you supported that referendum. And now, it's, we need more money. We gotta go to the state of Connecticut and ask for a waiver. A waiver that we already knew you should have known, that you didn't qualify for more money, and now you're saying you want more money. It's like the Board of Education says, George Rue comes up to the podium and says, "I'd like you to think about your bylaws and extend us, the citizens, to talk more." And he gets a response back from the board, "Those are our bylaws, we can't change them." But at the same darn meeting they're talking about, we're going to Hartford to ask the state of Connecticut to change their law to benefit us. That's the pot calling the kettle black. And, you know, I heard that night that you eliminated the geothermal heating system, and this was a little weeks ago that that's happened. The prior chairman of the Board of Ed was asking if we can get that back in there. But Mayor, that geo, if you go back and read the minutes of the expert who we have on staff, that geothermal heating system based on a $60,000 annual cost would have 12 to 14 years of payback. And that is way too long. He even says in the minutes that it's not a good deal, yet the former chairman of the Board just keeps pushing he wants that. Now, you were talking that night as well, that they would omit a third of the cameras because they gotta save money. Here you go again, Mayor. Wanting things, saying you're gonna do things, and then you don't do them. Same idea with the web school. We're still waiting for windows. That school closed 10 or 12 years ago on the construction. You never got the windows fixed. Can you imagine all the heat that's been going out those windows and the cool air that's been escaping all these years, and we've been paying whatever for heating and cooling costs? I mean, don't we finish projects? And I mentioned that when you were talking about prior to the referendum. Yet, we don't finish projects. We do a poor job to begin with. And then, of course, we had money that came in over the years. Think of that U-verse box over on the Weathersfield High School grounds. Where did that money go? Didn't go in our treasury, like I kept asking. You gave it to special interests. We just gave special interest money to Golf Road Builder over there, whatever his name was, 200 and plus thousands of dollars so he doesn't build some extra homes. But we end up being irresponsible, and now you need money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports.
Just one report from the HDC. The public is invited to a number of planning meetings at the library for the interactive maps and kiosks that will be going up in Old Weathersfield. Peter Gillespie, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, has invited the public to six sessions. They are Thursday evenings at 4:30 again at the library. They are February 13th, March 13th, April 10th, May 8th, and June 12th. And he invites all interested parties to come on down and at least look at the plans for those, or that interactive trail.
Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Go right ahead, Mike.
At 4:30, maybe, since there's like five of them, maybe one of them could be a little bit later, so people could, that work a little later can get there. I'd like to go see it.
Let me check on that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Other council points? Mr. Martino.
Mr. Mayor, it's been two meetings since. The first one was the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission met, and a couple of things they brought up, they have a need for some more friendly shopper, friendly visitors for that program where people go in and help the elderly by doing their shopping for them or visiting with them. There's a small, one-hour training program they do before you go, that's all. If anybody's interested in doing that, contact Social Services, there was an article in the paper on that. And AARP has started the tax aid to help people with preparing their taxes for those that have a need and are on moderate income. And thirdly, they're working on energy assistance right now to help our people through the CRT Energy Assistance Program. And the Second Commission, the Capital Improvement Advisory Commission, has been meeting, and they're very close probably at this Wednesday's meeting, they'll finish up everything for the prioritization of projects for the council to consider in the upcoming budget.
Thank you, council. Jeff?
Sure. With the second meeting of the Shared Services Committee on January 30th, we had full turnout from both the Board and the council side, and we're moving forward in terms of next steps to take with looking at merging IT services. And the Town Manager and the Superintendent will be reporting back to us for our March 26 meeting on exactly what their plan is, what needs to be done, what areas of IT can be shared most directly, and what their plan is for moving forward with that. So, we're quite happy that we're starting, and we will have a product, and we will be having some savings in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jeff, thank you.
A couple of things. Counselor Hurley and I sat in a little over a week ago on the initial presentation of the Board of Education budget to the Board members. So, this would be the administration proposal, which was, I think the increase was a little under 4.8 percent, and this was just the start of the Board going through it. The schedule calls for the Board to continue to deliberate on the budget, and I guess their goal is to have a final budget presented to the Board on the 25th of February, which is, actually, it's about three weeks before their deadline for getting it to us. But they have more workshops, they had one Saturday when we had our offsite. They've got another one tomorrow night, another one on this coming Saturday, and possibly another one the Saturday after that. So, they're taking a look at where their budget should be. By the way, the four point, I think it was 7, 9 percent or so, was, you know, no new programs budget, no reductions, but no new programs either. So, we took a look at it, we had a, Counselor Hurley and I had a number of questions, I shot a few of them over to the Board, so that process is beginning. And then, the other, the Insurance Committee met about a couple of weeks ago, and they mostly received a presentation from KERMA, Connecticut Inter Local Risk Management Agency. And generally speaking, it was on both the liability policy, but also on the workers' comp. Liability, we're actually having a really good year. I think the, our premiums, over a half a million dollars, and our claims halfway through the year were, I believe they were under, yeah, they were under, under $100,000. So, really good results so far by the town, and we had a pretty good year last year as well. So, that's good, because, you know, as you go through a number of years with a good record, that'll help contain your costs. KERMA's having some issues, not because of Weathersfield, but because of other towns where there are some high-cost claims that are out there, and they're running into higher reinsurance costs. But we seem to be doing pretty well. And on the, on the workers' comp side, we tend to run around 80 claims a year on workers' comp. And fortunately, at least this year, the severity of those claims has not been that great. So, there's been workshops that KERMA's run with the town to try to get those, get safe practices embedded in our, in the work culture. I think they're looking to do the same over at the Board of Ed. About half of the workers' comp claims that the town incurs are at the Board of Ed, though those tend to be less severe. But that's, it's a little counterintuitive to what you'd think, given that, you know, our side has police officers, our side has the folks who are out on the public works crews. So, that's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Nice job on that. Mike?
One thing, I can't remember if we talked about this, because we haven't met for a little while, but Parks and Recs Board, they're gonna start the dredging of the Cove soon. It'll probably start within a couple of weeks. I'm not sure if the Town Manager would have an update, and they'll be running, I believe, 24/7 for about three to four weeks.
You want to address that? Go ahead.
Fine, Mike.
Sure.
We have a letter here, actually, Mike Turner and Kathy Bagley met with the Army Corps last week, and we have a letter that's going out to all the people around the Cove, and we'll send a copy to the council, of course. It does talk about, the tentative start date is mid-February. It will run 24/7 until completed. The work should be completed by the end of March. Weather permitting, approximately 10,000 cubic yards of sediment will be removed and floated by barge to Middletown for disposal. The town has granted permission to the Army Corps to use the northerly portion of the Cove boat launch parking lot for contractors, temporary facilities, storage, staging area, and parking for employees. The work storage area will be enclosed with protective fencing, signs will be installed to identify the project. The remaining portions of the parking lot will be open to the public, however, access to the worksite area will be restricted for safety reasons. None of the material will be deposited on dry land. It'll go from the channel bottom to a barge, to a larger barge in the river, and then floated downriver, about three trips a day up and down the river.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Any other reports? Counselor comments? Any counsel comments?
I have three items I want to share. First, I would like to report on our council retreat this past Saturday, was held over at the Keene Center. All members of the council attended a three-quarter day retreat where we had a chance to take into account a full, comprehensive set of information that was provided by our Town Manager, that covered everything from our current financial status, budget, capital improvements, most of our bonding portfolio, our grant list, our tax success, and then we were able to spend some time taking a look at kind of our goals and objectives as a council full group. We did several exercises that allowed for a fair amount of dialogue, and overall, I think the council came away, I think fairly, saying that it was a very productive opportunity for us as a group to really take a look at our goals going forward for the town, in concert with the information that our Town Manager, Jeff Bridges, gave us. So, I would report that it was a very, very solid day for us as a full group, I have to say. Secondly, last Thursday, we held our State of the Town at the Keene Center in the morning. That is normally attended by about 40 to 50 people. We actually changed the format a little bit this year and worked in concert with the Chamber of Commerce, together with EDIC, and of course, our town staff, to co-sponsor an event that was designed not only to be our State of the Town, but also to address some economic development planning with the assistance of the state. We had some representatives from the State Department of Economic and Community Development. We had 127 attendees for the State of the Town, which was a very robust turnout, reflecting, I think, a lot of commitment on the part of our current businesses in town to participate in the dialogue that we engaged in. And I think as a reference point, it was also a very successful day, not only the turnout, but the exchange of information provided by all those supporting groups, the Chamber, Jeff Bridges reported, of course, on the town, and we shared some information from Economic Development and some of their strategies. So, another good event, I think, for our town as we move forward. Lastly, I just want to address a couple of points with respect to the high school renovation and what is happening with that. There is information, obviously, beginning to be shared with the public about the current state of the project. The Building Committee, of course, has been keeping us informed on a regular basis, and the public, of course, has had interest in hearing about how the project is unfolding. There are several facts I just want to make sure I clarify, based on some of the public comment this evening. First of all, with respect to the project overage, we are obviously working toward understanding the impacts that influenced the overage from the original project scope. And they do include some of the references that the public is making point on, the PCB expansion, the asbestos expansion, several items which we had provisions for in the initial project cost, but obviously have gone significantly over. One of the things I want to share for the benefit of the public is that the high school footprint and much of the equipment and information, even architectural design on a building that's over 60 years old, where learning is not accurate in some cases. And in fairness to the engineering estimates, a big factor has been as we've looked into the building and started to drill into and open up walls, we're finding quite a bit of, I guess, history that very hard to get our arms around. That has contributed as well, of course. This reference to the high school project being too big, I want to clarify. We obviously know the footprint of the high schools that exist today. There have been, I think, a total of five expansions of the footprint of the high school since its initial construction back in the 50s. And when we talk about the request to have the state take a look at a footprint waiver, one of the things I want to clarify for the public is that the language in the legislative information that is provided for new construction refers to new construction footprints for the municipalities looking to build a new high school. There are guidelines that have been presented to the municipalities over the last 10 years in the event that someone is considering building a new high school, and those footprint sizes are designed to maximize efficiency for anybody considering building a new school. As most of the public may remember during the referendum, we did our project as a renovate is new. That is the only current sizing that we can use when we talk about how the standard is being applied. But it is a matter, of course, that as we get into the project, as we are now, that looking at the costs as it unfolds, and we're beginning to get our arms around that information, is that that time that we can address the fact that our footprint is actually considerably larger as a result of those expansions. So, our approaching the state on a request for waiver reflects that fact, and obviously, we can't shrink the size of the high school, at least not without compromising programs, classroom space, and social and gymnastic activities. So, we are confined to the realities of the school, so I want to share that as well. With having said that, I think it's important to know that all the members of our council have had extensive dialogue over the last few weeks about the most effective way for us to address the concern that's been created by the increased cost. Much of it does reflect a recovering economy. We've said that publicly, we've obviously got empirical data to back that up. It's probably not a terrible surprise that our contractors that are coming in are coming in higher than they would have even two or three years ago. It's a reality of a recovering economy, and municipal work is always more challenging than private construction. Frankly, in private construction, I think people change POs very easily because the structure and the manner in which private construction occurs is generally going to have more resources available to it, and are not going to be confined by some of the municipal bid-making processes that we're confined with. Suffice it to say that I think, again, this full council is working together with a very capable building committee in addressing that and working hard to get that resolved, I think, in the next 90 days. We're moving forward, we're on time. I think our Town Manager reported at the State of the Town that we are actually positively optimistic about the progress we're making with the high school, and we'll continue to keep the public informed on that. I just want to be careful that the information that's going out is actually accurate as opposed to inaccurate in terms of what's being said to the public. Thank you for that, and I'll turn to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My one comment tonight was about the dredging, so thank you, Counselor Hurley.
Easy and done it off the hook. Dolores, anything from the Clerk's office?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. One, as I told the Parade Committee, the Memorial Day Parade Committee, their meeting is going to be Wednesday, the 5th, at 7 at the Keene Center in South 3. There seemed to be some confusion among people, so they would like that noted. And we had a Town Committee reports that were filed in my office. They will, you will not need to have a primary for either party because they came in with the correct number or under-endorsed candidates for the Town Committees. And the January 21st meeting was canceled. We had a special meeting of January 22nd, and we realized that the minutes are not on this agenda, but they'll be on the next agenda for you. That's it.
Thank you, Dolores. We'll move on to council action. Acceptance of resignations from boards and commissions? We have a couple.
Yes, from the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Anne Brickley of 143 High Crest Road, from 7/23 to 2013 to 6/30, 2015. From the Tourism Commission, Elaine St. Ange, 39 Randy Lane, from 7/23/13 to 1/15/14. And the Youth Advisory Committee, Claudia Covacci, from 80 Valley Crest Drive, 7/23/13 to 6/30/16.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? We have a motion and a second for those resignations. I think I do want to share, though, on that, that Elaine St. Ange, if I'm not mistaken...
I think I do want to share, though, on that, that Elaine St. Ange, if I'm not mistaken, has served the tourism and historic district for over 30 years. I know we'll mention that in reference to her letter of acceptance, but Elaine has been a long and hard contributor to our community. I'll thank her as well as the other two. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions? And we have appointments to boards and commissions. Deputy Mayor?
Motion to appoint to the Inland Wetlands Commission, Chanel Spinella, 84 Roundhill Road, term 1/21/14 to 6/30/17. To the Library Board, Martha Caneely, 12 Fairmont Street, 1/21/14 to 6/30/17. And to the Youth Advisory Board, Todd Willard, 159 Knott Street, 1/21/14 to 6/30/17.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, noes? Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening. We'll move on to other business. 3A, the approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Weathersfield. Motion?
Move to authorize the town manager to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Weathersfield and local 130-40, Council for AFME, AFVL, CIO, Physical Services Union, expiring June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is the three-year proposed contract between the town and the Physical Services Union. The effective date would be backdated to July of 2013. Some of the major provisions in the new agreement is that all new hires in the bargaining unit will enter the high deductible health plan that we initiated last year in the police contract. All members will participate in a health maintenance program, and if a member does not participate, they'll pay an extra 2.5% employee cost share for the health insurance. The employees' pension and OPEB contributions increase over the remaining two years of the contract, 1% each. Reduces the number of personal days allowed from four to two, and they can't carry over. Increases what the town pays for safety shoes from $200 a year to $350 a year per member. Increases the meal allowances for employees during plowing or other emergency operations. Increases the cost share in health insurance for the employees. Reduces the workers' compensation salary differential from one year to nine months. Wages 2.5 first year, that's retro to July 1, 2.85, and 2.75 in years 2 and 3. And there's some other language changes within the agreement. The union has ratified, so this will finalize the agreement. There's a detailed one that was sent out with all the proposed changes in red line, so if you have any questions, we'll answer.
Questions for the town manager? Jeff?
Just quickly, these guys have obviously done a great job keeping our streets clean this winter. Can you remind us just how many members are covered by this agreement, Jeff, approximately?
A little over 40.
Okay.
It includes trades, mechanics, and Physical Services Division, parks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Jeff, thank you for the work on this. I know, having a chance to have read it and gone through it, it was a Herculean document in terms of the materials, but you continue to make substantial progress with the contributions and the copays. Obviously, a really nice piece of work by you and your staff. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to 3B, approval of equipment sharing agreement and hold harmless indemnification agreement with the town of Newington, Weathersfield, and Berlin. You have a motion?
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign the equipment sharing agreement cooperative and equipment sharing agreement, hold harmless agreement with the towns of Newington and Berlin.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you know, the town of Weathersfield is in a group called the Midstate Group, which includes Cromwell, Berlin, Rocky Hill, Newington, and Weathersfield, and we come together to do certain sharing arrangements. And CROG and the state put out regional service sharing grants a year or so ago, and the towns applied as a group for a new tree truck. The town was in position to buy a new tree truck, and we applied for a regional service sharing grant for a tree truck. Newington and Weathersfield currently serve or currently share tree services. We send our tree crew over to Newington a portion of the year to do work over there under contract with Newington already. So in order to get the grant to help pay for 50% of the cost, we're developing this memorandum of understanding where our tree crew will take the tree truck and go to these other two towns, Berlin and Newington, coordinated through the tree wardens to do work, and then we get a grant for 50% of the truck. So this will be a model going forward because there's other heavy equipment purchases the towns need to make. One town may buy a grader, we'll share the grader. One town may buy a paving box, and we'll share the paving box under this master agreement. So we recommend going forward. One caveat on the motion is that, you know, final approval by the town attorney to sign off on it. The rate per hour, in order to amortize the cost of the vehicle, we paid $156 for it. The grant covers half, so we're into it for half that. So if you're a member of the group and you're participating in getting the grant, you'll pay a base rate for the hours that our crew is over there. That'll include salaries, amortization of vehicle, gas, and insurance and so forth. If you weren't part of the original agreement where the grant was awarded, then you'll pay a different rate. You'll have to pay into that grant or into that, you know, 50%. So that'll be worked out amongst the towns, but we think it's a good model going forward for sharing equipment.
Questions?
So Jeff, just a, that's an interesting view, and it makes a lot of sense. So if you're in the consortium or whatever, you're basically reimbursing the town based on a $82,000 or whatever, 88,000?
Right.
Yeah, $78,000 vehicle. And if you're another town that wasn't in it, it's going to be based on 156,000?
Correct.
Dollar vehicle. And, but the, you know, the labor is the same regardless, I would imagine. You're just, it's like dollar-for-dollar reimbursement of the labor and the benefits and so forth.
Right. It would have to fit within our own program. The three tree wardens have already talked, and so, like I said, we spent a couple of weeks in Newington, and we go over there when they need help, and then Berlin will work with their tree warden to develop a time where they can go over there and do some work. But there'll be differential rates, as you said. If we go to Newington or Cromwell, which weren't part of this original agreement, then it'll be a different rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve, did you have a question?
This is the only, or this the first piece of equipment under the agreement?
Yes.
And Jeff, if I understood it, our staff will be doing the work with respect to the tree.
Yes.
It won't be lending equipment to Newington.
No.
We'll be doing it. So the hold harmless is referring to the fact that our insurance, while they're doing work outside of town, is covered?
Yes.
Okay.
And that may not be the case for, say, a mortar grader or a paving box, but a tree truck is a very specialized piece of equipment. We train our employees to use this specialized piece of equipment. It's a, you know, trained arborist with trained operator. So we felt using our crew with this vehicle would be better than just handing it off to somebody else and, you know, making sure it was, you know, everything's covered.
Yeah, it's a real sensible approach. Good, nice piece of work, you know, obviously in the theme of regionalization and some of what the state is looking us to do. So a good step forward.
Right.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to 3C, appointment of the town attorney. Motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign an engagement letter with the law firm of Rome McGuigan for a term of two years for town attorney services with services and pricing per the request for proposal process and recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. I assume, Jeff, you want to cover this a little?
Sure, yeah. So the charter requires us to go out every two years for an RFP for town attorney. I think this has been true ever since the last time that the charter changed, and we put out an RFP, I think, back in December, and we had five firms that submitted proposals. They were all firms in the area. One of the firms' proposals was too costly, frankly, for the town to consider, so we ended up interviewing the other four firms. And when we went through the other four firms, they all made very good presentations, but we ended up selecting basically two finalists, which was the incumbent, Halloran and Sage, and Rome McGuigan, which had previously been the town attorney a couple of stints, as recently as five, six years ago. And during the process, we entertained the bids, and the way the firms, the way the firms' bid is that they submit rates for their partners, for their associates, and essentially for their paralegals. And honestly, the rates, I think, one, Rome McGuigan was a little lower on partner, Halloran and Sage were a bit lower on the, for the associates and for the paralegal, so that was not really a driving factor at all. We took a look, and I don't want to speak for everybody in the committee, but we took a look at the firms' expertise. We took a look, because they had both done work for the town, we took a look at who had done the work previously. I think just because the rates are somewhat different, we were sensitive to not having partners do work that otherwise could be shared, could be done by lower-cost folks in the firm. We took a look at records of success, and frankly, both firms had good records of success as town attorney. We took a look at responsiveness. We also took a look at, you know, we do also have a revale that's about to come up. We took a look at record on some, on issues such as tax appeal, record on tax appeal, and the committee voted three to nothing to recommend to the full council that we go with Rome McGuigan. Now, one thing we should say is that we don't, if we do this, we don't pick up all the work and all of a sudden bring it over from one firm to another. If a firm has been heavily involved in a process such as the building committee or negotiating radio contract or whatever, then we would have that firm continue. So we expect that Halloran and Sage probably will continue to do a fair amount of work for us in the coming years, just like when we switched over to Halloran and Sage, Rome, four years ago, Rome McGuigan actually did all the work in order to successfully close the Wilkis purchase. So both firms are very strong firms. They're local, they've had good representation. In this case, we've decided that the edge went to Rome McGuigan.
Any questions? Mike?
I do. On the Finance Committee, I happen to miss that one meeting. I did send a note in. I personally don't think we should probably switch, but I know both of the people are pretty even, but I thought for consistency, I don't agree with always going with the lower-priced legal, like paralegal or something, because I know we've run into issues in our past, like having things done not the best way, and I feel that it could be more political patronage, more than just saving money and going with a new firm.
Thank you. Any comments?
I happen to be on the committee as well, and I would agree with Mike that it is a very, it was a close call, and Jeff. Everyone who appeared, frankly, I think we all came away with being impressed with the presentations, frankly, from everyone. That said, I do think Rome edged out Halloran, frankly, ever so slightly. On price, I think they were a little bit cheaper, and they also did, we requested breakdowns of who did the work, partner versus associate, on varying matters of different complexities. And I think history has shown us that both law firms did a good job when they had done the work for us, so there was no issue of not getting quality legal work over the past eight years, frankly, or 10 years, with either firm. But it did seem, based on the bills that we had reviewed, that Rome McGuigan was more efficient. When needed, they would assign an associate who was more than capable of handling the work rather than having a partner who has a much higher rate do all the work. So I think that frankly tipped the scale for this, from my perspective. And again, it was a close call, but clearly we are getting a quality firm at a good price.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have one more comment.
Sure.
I think maybe in the future, and this might be a suggestion for the Charter Commission, is that when we go out for RFP, maybe more so the town manager and the town staff, like they do with other contracts, kind of pick it instead of the council. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mike. Open, sorry, Don.
No problem. Just wanted to thank Halloran and Sage. Over the past several years, we've had some very complex contracts that have been drawn up, I think of the radio contract and some of the other issues that we had dealt with. And, you know, they really work to protect the interests of the town diligently.
Yeah.
Not that any other attorney would not do that, but, I mean, we had some really tough things come up over the last several years.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate the work of the subcommittee on this and the contributions by the folks that do all the interviews. Obviously, two very capable law firms had a chance, obviously, since taking office, to work closely with the current town attorney on two matters that they did terrific work on. So, and I think, as Jeff pointed out, which I'm happy to see, is we will continue to use them on existing matters that they've already begun work on, some of it quite significant, so I imagine that we'll have relationships with both going forward, which is in the best interest of the town as well. So good work on both sides. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
No.
No.
Abstentions? Motion passes.
Can we have a roll call, so we know?
Sure. Dolores?
Counselor Hammond?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley?
No.
Counselor Kotkin?
Yes.
Counselor Martino?
Yes.
Counselor Ralph?
No.
Counselor Roberts?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Yes.
And Mayor Montanari?
Yes. Thank you, Dolores. Moving on to 4A, award of bid for gasoline for 2014. Motion?
Motion to award unleaded gasoline bid to dump Dime Oil for the year 2014.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We bid gasoline through CROG, and the bids were open, and there were several vendors that bid. Now, this is a little different. The CROG bid includes a differential, and on the 18th of, the CROG bid came out on the 17th of December, and on the 19th, when we received the bids, the price had increased 19 cents. So on the 17th, when CROG assembled the bid, the price was $2.71 a gallon. When we got the bid results, the NYMEX price, which is what the whole thing's based on, was $2.90, plus a differential for each vendor. So we went back to the vendors and said, you know, two days late, we're missing 18 cents, you know, and by then it was escalating pretty severely after that. So we went back to the vendors and did the best we could, so we got Dime Oil at $2.90 with no differential, so that's it. There's no add-on, there's no transport cost. It's $2.90 a gallon, which is one penny more than we're paying now. So that's what our recommendation is.
Thank you, Jeff. Good catch on that, too.
Sally did a good job. Sally and Heather went back on it.
Yeah, Sally's doing some terrific work for us. Any questions about that? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Abstentions? Thank you, Jeff. Motion passes. 4B, approval of change order with Southern Middlesex Industries, $100,000. You have a motion?
Motion to approve the change order for $100,000 with Southern Middlesex Industries for remediation of the area of the high school known as Jim B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Rear and Counsel. As you've heard, there is, as we even talked about this evening, there was an additional area that was encapsulated in a new exterior wall and a new interior wall that wasn't part of the original construction of the building, where we found additional materials that need to be remediated. And Christine, the chairman, and Mike are here to answer direct questions, but over the February break, we intend to remediate that area, and we put the work out to bid rather than go with the existing contractor on a change order. We wanted to bid this work to see if we'd get a better price, and we did. And we did. We got $100,000 of pricing. So I'll ask Mike and Christine to talk about this a little bit.
Thank you for coming, Mike and Chris.
There were several vendors off of the state bid list who submitted proposals. The two lowest bidders were brought in, and a scope review was done with them. And SMI, of course, is the company that's working with us right now. We've been very satisfied with the work. They were able to do the last abatement during the Christmas holiday, and we were able to open school on time without any difficulty. So our expectation would be the same in this case. It was actually the staff, Mike worked closely with ONG to bring forth this recommendation. So I would just ask Mike if he has any other things that you want to add, and then any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that there were, you know, once the asbestos and the PCB materials were uncovered, obviously, they were in areas that were not previously tested before. But once staff, you know, the ONG staff identified that there could be a potential, you know, problem, the area was completely sealed off, and our environmental consultants, Fosse &amp; O'Neil, performed air tests to make sure that there was no release into the rest of the school, which there was not. So everything was contained. Those containment costs were actually, we were looking at an additional change order for that work as well. And thanks to the efforts of Rob Martinotti, our superintendent out there, he included those in with SMI's bid and was able to negotiate them down to the $100,000. So that's a complete cost for both the initial response work and for the abatement over the February break.
And Mike, if I understood it correctly, there's 28,000 of work that's already been completed that's included in that 100,000?
That's correct.
Okay. So in truth, when you're comparing those bids, you want to make sure we make a provision for that 28, which we would have to pay them if we did not select them, so to make the actual comparison.
That's correct.
So it's almost, looks to be a significant difference between the other four vendors.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think, Mike, one other thing. You said something about the testing. I understood it correctly from talking with somebody earlier. There was actually testing done in this area, but where this material was found was just outside the boring areas?
That's correct. It was, some of it was felt underlayment underneath the floor. So we, you know, it was like, we did our tests over here, and when we got to that end of the room, we uncovered some material, so.
I sort of make a point, because, you know, again, in reference to some of the public learning about these overages, we did bore tests in one of these rooms, and we completed those bore tests and did not find this fiber material. So sort of understanding it pragmatically, we've got folks going in who do an engineer work. They do bore tests in part of the room, and then we get going, we start tearing a floor, and we find this fiber. And then we have, we're like, we didn't see that in those bores. This is in one section of the room, correct?
That's correct.
If I understood, there's no explanation for why this one section of the gym has this fiber and one does not. Nobody has any backup?
No, there was no, nothing on any of the plans. There are no record plans of the school, you know, construction or previous renovation work and such.
Yeah.
ONG kind of thought that it might have been an area of the floor that was unlevel, that needed this, you know, material placed in order to level it up when the floor was placed. We just honestly don't know.
Thank you. Questions, Mike?
Yeah, to kind of follow up on Paul. So they bored, like, in a different, close to the area, and then it was found. So now, did they follow up and bore in other areas to make sure there wasn't, they didn't miss other areas?
Once the area is placed under containment, all of the demolition work, whether it's, you know, PCB or asbestos-related or not, if it's within the containment, they can abate it. Okay, there's no additional cost. You know, the demo is included in their bids.
Okay. Could it be possibly in any other part of the building that they, that will find the same situation?
It's likely that we may find something down the road. But, you know, what we've doing now is that Fosse &amp; O'Neil and ONG are taking the plans. We're trying to get ahead of where the contractors are going to be working, looking at the level of testing, looking at the material on site, seeing if additional testing is warranted before they get into those areas. So we are taking a proactive approach and trying, getting ahead of this.
Thank you.
Mike, and Jim Bee is behind the main gym?
Jim Bee is west of the main gym, yes.
Okay. And is that an area that's being demolished, or it's?
Yes.
And that's how it was discovered in this process?
That's correct.
All right. In terms of other demolition, do you anticipate any other areas where we're demolishing areas other than what's being done in this first phase?
Well, throughout the renovation, yeah, throughout the renovation, there's going to be, you know, various phases of demolition. SMI's contract is in the range of like $3.6 million. They've done about $600,000 worth of work so far. So we're only, you know, not even a quarter of the way there.
Okay.
Questions, other questions?
Just real quick. So $600,000 of a $3.5 million proposal that, or a bid that's out there, was there an expectation that they would reach the $3.5 million?
The $3.5 is their base bid to do all of the demolition work and all of the abatement work that had been identified previously.
And if we see more, and it goes above the $3.5 million, would we?
We'll be back at you for another change order.
Okay.
Yes.
Knock on wood. Or fire.
You know, practically every area of this building was tested. It would just be our luck. One area where it showed up, the testing, as Mike said, was on one side of the room and it appeared on another, so. Looking at those drawings as we move forward here. So it's a building full of surprises.
Yes, it is. Thank you for coming this evening. We have a motion and a second on playable. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you again, Christine and Mike, for explaining that. We have an ordinance for introduction. I think, Jeff, you're just going to refer that for us, right?
Yeah, that's a resolution authorizing town managers to sign an agreement entitled the Master Municipal Agreement for Construction Projects with the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Now, there'll be a public hearing on that resolution at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Thank you. Okay. Minutes from the Town Council Regular Meeting of January 6. Motion to approve? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any additions, changes, modifications? Nothing? Wow. That's great. Excellent. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, passing the minutes?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Everybody was there? Great. And we are able to move into follow-up public comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Gus! What a surprise!
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. I have basically two more concerns tonight. I have a dog at home, and I pay $9, I guess, for the fee, registration fee, or whatever it is, which is okay, I'm not against that at all. But why do you charge $9? What do you do for me, for that dog? And the reason I'm bringing this up, okay? At the corner, let me see, I think it's the west northerly corner of Orchard and Morrison Avenue. It seems that a lot of dogs are going for a walk, and that's where they stop and go to the bathroom. Who's responsible to pick up that stuff, crap, whatever you want to call it? Feeses, I guess? Okay, it's full. I mean, my daughter says it stinks. You can just walk, and by the time you get there on the corner, 10 feet away, you could... So what are the right procedures? I mean, I don't, if I see someone with a dog that goes to the bathroom and they don't pick up, I let them know. But now, what's the town responsibility regarding this? You guys just wash your hands, or what's the solution? Problem number two. Whenever it snows, it's my understanding that we do have 24 hours to clean the snow from the sidewalks. Am I right? 24 hours? The past few storms, and I walk, and I drive around, and I notice something, just like, there is an empty lot on Silas Dean, I guess on the west side of Silas Dean, just south of the police station. And I could be wrong, but every time I go by, one day later, two days later, three days later, the snow in this front lot, the snow in this empty lot on the sidewalk is always there. Why? And you know what bothers me the most? If it was like, you know, two miles away from the police station, it would not be that bad. But when it's in front of the police station, and you try to tell me that the police doesn't see it, it's hard for me to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Mr. Young?
Good evening again. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. This evening, you spoke about the, and you voted on who was going to be your next law firm. I, what I gathered was it was dollars per hour, and how much they were going to cost you is all your concern, which is a good concern. But I think performance, efficiency, and win results are something else to consider. You had a couple names that you were selecting from, Rome and Sage, and I don't know all those other names that go along with them. But I can, you know, who handled the ethics case? That cost us a lot of money, and we didn't really have a winner, did we? We had the police pension issue. I don't know how that turned out. But I'm sure we spent a lot of money there, too. So here we go back to performance and win for the town. Or do we just go in because they're a certain dollar per hour, and we let them do whatever they want until we make a deal, and someone backs out because someone ran out of money, or whatever the case might be? I don't think that's a good way to win a case, but I'm sure lawyers do that. But I think we should, you know, efficiency, performance, and win is what we should be looking for. I don't know, I don't think we did that tonight. Next, I was talking last, in the first section of this discussion at this meeting, about why we're short of money, and, you know, here we are, we're buying a radio system for millions of dollars. We're buying parts, we're buying all kinds of stuff. We're buying fire engine. We have other ones that sit in the garage, barely go out for the fire, for the parades. That's about all they're good for. They're so big. And there's a number of things that we purchased that we should be very concerned about, and frugal. But I haven't seen that in our town council over the last number of years. It's just buy, 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 and here we need something. Here we're short some money for something, and now we're, as you say, Mayor, you might have to go out to the public and ask for more money. But you've had a lot of money, and it's all gone. Look at the parks. Every time you get a grant, the grants normally aren't 100%. You get $50,000 grant, but the conditions tied to that is you've got to put in so many more dollars of your own, our own money. And we keep doing this. And do we really need all this stuff? Because it just keeps costing and costing and costing. And again, we need windows over at Webb School. I think if we had the windows, the cost of our energy would be going down. But I don't see that really happening at the moment. But I think another issue we should consider, and I've mentioned this weeks and months ago, is this morning in the Hartford Current, Glass &amp; Berry is going to be having talks about eliminating one of their schools, one of their elementary schools, because the population is coming down. Our population is coming down for our students as well. Maybe our town students aren't going down, but the academies that Malloy is putting in, those charter schools are taking children out of our school, which means our school populations are going to go down. Unless we, unless we get eager and we say, let's import some kids from Hartford, or let's import some from who knows wherever else to keep the school full. But our children, our students, the forecast is less, less, less. Glass &amp; Berry's looking at it, too. We all drink from the same MDC water system. Their population's going down, ours is too. And in the article this morning, they also talked that they're losing 10 teachers. They're not going to be replaced. Why aren't we doing something like that? And they're a top-notch school compared to Weathersfield. Their scores are much better, and they're willing to lose 10 teachers. They're willing to talk about, let's reduce one of our facilities, their facilities. We should be doing the same. Maybe we could sell it to Crick. They've got a lot of money. But the thing is, we need to find ways of reducing the expenditures here in this town and keep it affordable. If we keep going up, 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 up like we have been doing, you know, I don't think it's going to do us good. Are homes still selling as good as they, everybody thought they were? Are we seeing those prices going up here in Weathersfield on homes? I don't see it happening. So I think we should consider some things here that are economical. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you for coming out in this inclement weather from the public and our council.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.